I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You turned it on this. I turned it on.
That's why I was slow getting up.
Alright, let's call the meeting to order and look for most to approve the agenda as pointed unless there's any additions.
Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve.
So yours and a second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Prove the minutes from eight thirty.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. Been really quiet lately. It's nice listening. Things are going well.
That's right.
Yeah, we have Shelley, that's at eight thirty-five, so...
Do you want to do claims?
Well, we do our claims.
We could do that. I looked through and I have the general number.
Just give me a second, Bruce. Let me get this little bird. Guarantee and getting it right. Okay?
Two thirty-two, eight-eight-eight, point eight-six.
Wow.
And no drainage.
No drainage.
Oh, okay.
Two-three-two, eight-eight-eight, point eight-six.
Two-three-two, eight-eight-eight, eight-six.
Could we go on then?
You're first to the first.
I first did it, yeah.
The day you got the bit.
Aye.
Okay, we have authorized chairman to sign.
Aye.
We didn't vote. You jumped up right in here so fast.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Aye.
To make it official.
Okay, we'll do authorize chairman to sign proclamation of September as National Voter Registration Month. So...
Just something by the state or?
Through the Secretary of State.
Through the Secretary?
Secretary of State sent this out.
Promoting?
Says anybody of seventeen years old or eligible for register if they're old enough to vote by that time and...
I'm not even sure. It's been so long since I was at school. Do they, the older kids, do they register them at school? Do we know? I don't.
I would say my senior year, we did.
That's what I thought, but I couldn't remember if they still did that or not.
Yeah.
American government, we had to go work, both the Republicans and Democrats.
Oh, really?
Campaign office.
Ooh.
Put out signs in people's yards and, yeah.
Wow. Well, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will sign the proclamation. Okay, now we have approved twenty-eighty agreement with North Central Iowa Regional Solid Waste Agency. This is, we've done this back once, probably in January, and it was written up wrong, so they had to redo it, so...
What's the gist of the agreement?
It's basically saying who all's involved in the organization and who can, you gotta have this agreement to haul your waste to landfill.
And the landfill they're hauling it to is the word.
No, no, no.
That's one of your favorite committees.
Yeah, not even bad, really. Got a lot of energy and people on it.
That's always a good one.
And it's, um, there's thirty-two entities in it.
Holy cow.
So it does cover a large area. If you ever go to landfill, I go there six, eight times a year at least, it just grows like a mountain.
Yeah, I do.
Did they ever get their sliding?
No, they're still working on that.
Figuring that out?
They got a, they got a design figured out and cost estimates and they're working on it, but it's...
So this is essentially a reworded agreement?
Yeah.
It's the same thing that was signed and they didn't do it right, so...
Yeah, and then the reason we did that one is because they didn't quite have all the members signed up on the first one and...
So this should be, this is correct.
This should be right.
Well, I would, having said that, I would make the motion to approve the twenty-eighty agreement with the North Central Iowa Regional Solid Waste Agency.
Oh, second.
We have a first and a second. Any more discussion on garbage? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You opposed? Motion carries.
We could probably just switch Ben being seated here and Shelley's not. Oh, she's on the, oh, she is there.
Oh, she's on Zoom, okay.
You're too quiet.
Hello.
Hello.
Take a second here to sign paperwork and we'll be right with you.
This is my first time doing this, so I'm new to this.
Well, good luck. Okay, well, we have Community Family Resources, Shelley, and, um, it's proclamation of National Recovery Month. I'll let you take it from there.
So, uh, the way that Shelley had sent over the proclamation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Will I just breeze the proclamation? Is that how they usually do it?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yep, just gonna breeze through it.
Okay. So, recovering that proclamation, uh, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness and prevention of mental health and substance use disorders, uh, treatment is effective and recovery is vital to the well-being of the individual and the community. Um, treating mental health and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Uh, we encourage relatives and friends of people with mental health and or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize a sign of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must strive to offer all persons the same opportunities for treatment and wellness. One in ten individuals aged twelve and up are diagnosed with substance use disorder in a given year. One in five U.S. adults experience a mental health disorder in a given year. The COVID-19 pandemic poses a new challenge in our great nation and illicit substance use has shown worrisome gains. Recent changes made in the state of Iowa and our nation make the personal possession of the opioid overdose reversal drug narpene available and should be responsibly promoted. To help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Service and Substance Use and Mental Health Services, Sosansha, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors invite all residents of Humboldt County to participate in National Recovery Month. Again, let's see, National Recovery Month, and by virtue of the authority vested in the U.S. by laws of Humboldt County, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-twenty-one as National Recovery Month in Humboldt County, and call upon the people of Humboldt County to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's recovery month. I believe that's all of it.
Yep, that does look like it. What? I mean, I don't...
Do what?
I missed the introduction. What's your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Carrie Cook. I am the Health Patient Supervisor for Fort Matt Johnson's.
Okay, Carrie, thank you.
Yes.
Well?
I make a motion for the chairman to sign the proclamation on National Recovery Month.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There's a place for everyone to sign, so I'm gonna sign it and pass it around.
Thank you, Carrie.
Did you email it down through the?
Alrighty, she'll shoot you an email of the copy of that and you'll have it on file. Alright, thank you. Alright.
Morning.
Morning, Father.
For the agenda today, I've got, uh, discuss and possibly act on a vote for the engineer's office roof replacement. Uh, I reached out to Old Sands Construction, Jensen Builders, to get a vote to whether we were up on just the office portion of everything in the back. Jensen did that back in twenty-fourteen, I think. Um, put everything on the front as the original office from the Gears and Building, what it's called. Uh, we've got a moment response. We're starting to leave. You can see brown spots on the tiles. So we got a vote from, uh, Sands Construction to pull off and replace the tin with new tin, furnished off trim, flash enclosures, plus closures, fasteners, and ceiling, uh, for a quote of eighty-six thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars. And a quote from Jensen to put a new roof over the existing roof, uh, where they lay down insulation in between the two roof layers. And the quote for that was ninety thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Ninety thousand nine hundred and ninety?
Yes. Uh, talked to Joel last week. Some materials are eight to ten weeks out and then insulation would be afterwards. I talked to Taylor this morning with Jensen and he said we'd be looking at December and he says the chance that we did it earlier, but more than likely we're still for insulation.
Well, what kind of system was Sands putting on?
Sands was putting on, uh, same gauge steel. What they're looking at doing is basically pulling off the existing roof and putting a new roof on. Uh, talking to Taylor with Jensen, the first time he had quoted it both ways, at the same price either way, he said basically...
The labor's better.
Yeah, if you're pulling off the tin, you've got higher labor and less materials expenses. If you're putting on an additional roof, you've got higher cost of materials but less labor, and it ends up being a lot of wash.
Does that matter for the weight if you leave the existing, um, roof on there?
It wouldn't. Um, what they've got is a more deep-up system. They've got additional ripping that they put in between the two layers, so it shouldn't affect the strength of the roof, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, if it's more weight, though, if you've got basically two roofs on there, there's more weight.
Right, yeah, I'm not sure buildings, you've got steel purlings underneath on the first core system that'll handle.
Is that what we did on the north side?
The north side, we did put on, uh, an additional roof.
A roof over the top?
Yep.
I've never heard of that on a steel roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty common practice.
They would, but I'm talking with Taylor, uh, you can only put an additional roof layer on once, and then whenever this thing goes bad, fifty, sixty years from now, you've gotta tear off the old pairs and start over again. It's just like when she walks out. You can only put an additional layer on so twenty years before you gotta do it.
But are you gonna have more labor if you're tearing off two roofs fifty or sixty years from now?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I know you won't have to.
That's a, that's a...
I know you won't have to, but...
Because this building that you're fixing the roof on is by no means fifty or sixty years old.
It is.
It is.
As you said, but at least that...
Roof that's being replaced is out of it. Probably already sold.
Gears would've put that on, didn't he? Well, he had the building built, wasn't it?
I'm assuming.
Gears, yeah.
When it was Gears and Motors, that was what, in, uh, like, sixties or the seventies?
That was early.
Before John Deere was up there. Before John Deere was up there. Casey's been up there at least twenty-five.
What is, what is added R factor in insulation, do you know?
Uh, that I do not know.
Did they want money upfront?
No.
How come they approved that bill today? How come they approved that bill today?
How can we?
Yeah.
Uh, we can act on it and tell them to order it and they'll order the materials, but I don't, I assume they don't have to pay for the materials until it arrives to them.
Okay, 'cause it was sent today's bills to approve it.
I don't have, I, I don't give a copy to anybody for bills.
Well, you're saying the bills for Jensen for ninety thousand?
No.
What about books? 'Cause I know I saw something in there.
Where? This says four inches of fiberglass, Rick, on...
Well, that's, that's, um, from Sands.
I understand. He asked how much insulation was in there.
They said four inch in between, uh, the two roof structures, or the two roof systems.
Between the purling and...
They have some kind of, uh...
What they do is they have a, uh, a piece of metal that matches the corrugation on the roof, the existing roof, sits down over the top of the existing purlings, that gets screwed to that purling, and then they put the, then they put insulation in between the purlings, and then they put a new sheet of steel over.
High-tech thing that goes over the ribs on the purling, it's metal?
Yeah.
They, they basically start with their new substructure.
Substructure, yeah.
Get all that done, insulation.
Now, they strip on a roof with two-by-fours, put new plywood on and treaming it, you know. The thing is, you gain, gain more insulation.
Is there insulation underneath this existing roof?
Three inches.
From what?
So then they will put insulation between the two?
Yeah, we're doubling our insulation, probably.
We're doubling your insulation.
So we probably gain that money back in short time.
Well, I like to say R value would increase, so be ever better insulated.
I just want to, yeah, you know...
If you look at the insulation over sixty years?
Yeah.
The total for a claim for secondary growth was ninety thousand seven forty-seven.
It has nothing to do with this?
No.
It's just, it's just a convenient number. It's close.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good to double check.
That, that's something I think you need to look at is the, the R value of the roof versus sixty years.
Well, I don't know, like I said, I'm not a metal roof expert, nor am I even an asphalt shingle roof expert, but, you know, back in the day, they used to, you know, a lot of times they'd put this regular shingles over existing. You don't see that so much anymore. It's usually tear off.
Ever used to tear it off?
I don't, this is steel, I realize, it's not asphalt shingles. I'm just curious if, you know, and I'm sure this is a fine system.
And that's what we did on the north side of the building. Have we had any problems?
No. It's, it's, uh, pretty commonplace from what I understand.
Did you get with Joel and ask him about putting it on top for a bid for that? I just, personally, I just need to keep it locally.
Right. I, I didn't ask Joel about putting a, uh, an additional system on top of this. I just asked for a quote for the roof, uh, which is what I asked.
So really, we're not comparing apples to apples, really?
Right, right, you are.
Price-wise, we are, but it, I mean, would he, I mean, would it be the same cost to have, if you guys like a roof on a roof?
I can set face with, with Joel and see if that's the same price for the same type setup.
'Cause I would, like I said, I personally like to keep it in Humboldt County.
Right.
For business.
Well, just an FYI, if we, the sooner you get them to order it, the sooner we have a chance.
The only bad part, when you go back another bid, it's gonna be, uh, ten bucks less. You know, they already know.
No, I, I did that. No, I did that, but I would still just assume.
When we were, when we were budgeting, uh, till back in December, I made the phone call and I thought, well, prices are order, and obviously they've gone up about twelve percent from December. Uh, I think the original price that I'd gotten from Jensen back then was seventy-five thousand, you know, so I mean, we went up nine thousand.
Yeah.
Price of steel, just because the price of steel has gone down.
Right, price of steel.
And availability has gone down.
And you said eight to ten weeks sand and Jensen said December, right?
They're both, they're both...
Similar.
Yeah, same time.
Yeah.
This, there's no, nothing to do with any insurance with this. This is just, well, whatever.
This is just whatever.
Why did we, he said December?
Yeah.
A year ago? Why did we jack around with this for? They, they won't start it till this? No, I know them. If you got quotes earlier.
For budgeting purposes. I didn't have the mon, I didn't have the money last year, last December.
So it needed to be this fiscal year.
So it needed to be this fiscal year.
And they're gonna pull a crew out someplace that they're building a facility or a building to do a roof.
This, this kind of work is cold weather work. This is what they do in the winter time, because you can't, you know, you can't pour concrete in the winter time. You work with steel in the winter. You don't put...
Not very good in the winter.
Yeah, but that's, that's when they'll do it. That's when they, even if they did it, they'd probably do it in the winter time.
Yeah. Well, I'd make the motion for Sands Construction. It's the lower bid and it's locally here in Humboldt County.
I'll second.
My comment on this, I think it's foolish for four thousand dollars to not have that extra insulation for sixty years. Would you put six inches of insulation in your house? Uh, I don't know. I think it's...
Well, okay, we're gonna save maybe some insulation on our heat factor. No, heat, I know we're gonna save heat factor, but in fifty years, then we're gonna have to pay to have two roofs at a time.
Yeah, but that's not a lot.
That's not very much. I would say you keep it the other way, because that extra insulation's gonna save you a bunch in every utility cost for buildings, for, uh, businesses. It just keeps going up and up and up.
Well, then I think we should give Sands, if, if we're not comparing apples to apples, then I think we should give Sands the, um, option to say, hey, what would it be to, um, add on? 'Cause like I said, I still like to keep the business in Humboldt County.
The other portion that was redone, like Ben said, maybe thirteen, fourteen, is the re-roof. They put themselves down, they had insulation. I'm no expert on it. I know, they're getting apples to oranges comparison. I wouldn't put asphalt shingles over asphalt shingles today.
No.
But this is...
But if you're, but if you're putting a new roof on and the only way you can get in there is put insulation in, when you did the roof, you put the insulation in.
Yeah. I mean, this, this is a little different deal.
And I agree with that. I just want, we can keep it within the same range and we can keep it in Humboldt County. I say let's give the...
I guess the only thing is that, yeah, not an exact...
No, we're not, we're not, we're not doing apple blue.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll just table that for now.
I guess I'm, I'm reading both sides and they're both four, four inches, so I don't know that one's gonna do any different than the other.
Sands put down, they put insulation below the...
Yeah, they got four inches of insulation on new, yeah, so I mean, it's still four inches of insulation.
There's insulation there.
It's on the backside.
Yeah, that's why.
Paper savings.
Yeah, we're, we're going green.
Basically, they're tearing off the old four inches of insulation and putting new on. If you read that.
Well, so they move and discard existing trim and roof panels. It doesn't mean about getting rid of...
That's the sheet.
'Cause I don't, I don't think you can throw eight inches on and screw through it to the purlings.
Probably not.
Because typically what they do on these, these steel buildings, they roll out, it's four foot wide or six foot wide insulation that's got vinyl on both sides, they lay it out over, put the steel sheet on, screw right through the steel into the purling. That's what you see when you look up. It looks like a vinyl coating.
Same price.
Same price.
They actually prefer to do it that way, is what he said.
Oh, so it'd be eighty-six thousand? Okay, then my motion's...
They prefer to put over the additional roof over the top. They said it's more material, but it's less labor.
Which from Sands is...
That's why they didn't give both options.
Especially when the other, the north house, the roof was done that way. They would've noticed that, you would've thought.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, concerned, like I said, the, in the kind of sandies you care and so on, but I didn't realize that that roof you're replacing is fifty years old.
Well, the county's had it for almost thirty.
Wow.
I think we bought it in ninety-three. Um, I mean, we've had it for thirty and haven't had to stick anything into the roof other than a couple tubes of blackjack.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Well, doesn't make any difference, but the north part is...
Sort of jetty.
Jensen. Hindsight, probably should've done the entire building at that time.
Well, like I said, I, I understand you need to budget, but hindsight being what it is, we knew earlier this year that this is going wacky with building materials.
Well, probably not in December.
Yeah.
That didn't happen until...
How would we have known this was gonna happen? I mean, there's no way to know that construction things are gonna...
Actually, they should've laid down. You would've thought because building would've been shut down. Instead, they went early, this manufacturing must've got shut down.
Right.
Truck shipping.
It's just a perfect storm of everything.
Alright. So now we're on the Sands will...
Do it for the same price as, of their current...
Does that mean for clarification, the old eighty-six one ninety-eight is what they're...
That's what they're bid would be, be the roof of your system.
Okay.
There you go. Question answered, so now...
Okay, back to our discussion time. We have a first and a second. Any more discussion?
This is for Sands.
For the motion, you go.
Motion, this would be, maybe we should redo the motion, being the person was for the other, the other roof system.
Okay, so I will make the motion for Sands to put on a new roof with four inches of insulation for eighty-six thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars.
I will second the use.
You gotta withdraw your first motion first.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
They, Roberts ruled. Okay, I withdraw my first motion.
That's wrong.
Okay, we have first motion withdrawn. Do you have to redo it?
Yeah.
Do we do it? Okay.
First motion, first draw. Second motion's on the floor.
Okay.
Alright, so now we have the motion to have Sands for a new roof overlay the existing roof, add four inches of insulation. We have a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Beyond that, uh, Brian Nelson out of our party shop is retiring. He, we are doing a retirement party at the county on Friday at ten o'clock. That's his last official day of work. Uh, he just had his anniversary date, so he renewed his four-week vacation. So his last day on books in the county will be October nineteenth. Uh, I think he's round, wants to stop by, wishes well.
When is it Friday?
Friday, two o'clock.
Where at? Oh, it is in Humboldt. Okay, okay.
How many years for him?
Quite, quite a few. It's quite a few.
Yeah, it's over, it's over thirty. I would say he's right around thirty-five.
Why don't these guys retire in summer so we don't have to find somebody to run their machines?
I know.
Yeah, go fish it.
He wanted to retire right before harvest.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm just being.
He farms a lot for, uh.
Right.
He does all the playdancing farming order.
But it'd make it a lot easier when we're trying to put somebody in the machine that.
It would, to give a little bit of windshield.
Yeah.
For that white stuff.
Well, we wish him the best and thank him.
Yep.
Try to get through there Friday and.
Stop by and have cookies.
Have a cookie and.
Okay.
Very hopefully.
Uh, other than that, we've got a pre-construction meeting Thursday briefly with our contractor, Whitman, uh, for that bridge tear out Fox Culver down in Norway township on Washington. They've moved the dozer in, he figures they'll move a hoe in sometime this week and plans on starting construction, start next week.
So back to that retirement, Ben, will you do the same thing, you'll advertise inside to move if anybody wants to move?
Inside, uh, they had till last Friday to transfer, nobody opted to transfer, so I'll try and get this in posted in the paper. Get, uh, to add today, so they can get in this week and next week's paper for, for advertising for a lay operator position at the party shop.
Perfect. Great.
I had something for you, this is, what a huge driveway here.
Yeah.
Lot of driveways installed, which is fine, you know, we, we, everything is fine with that. Close to home on C twenty, which is an old state road, used to be two twenty-two back in the day. Several driveways installed there, but again, like I said, fine, comics doing it for the farmers and owners. They're set at what I would call the grade of the ditch, if you will, the right of way as it sets. Do you have the thought process, you know, I mean, not that that needs to be cleaned out per se, cause it doesn't seem to affect, usually it's because of drainage and, you know, on or off the road.
It's a pretty shallow ditch, is what you're saying?
Well, they are, but the reason they're shallow is they've silted in over, talk about how many years? Hundred, no, maybe not a hundred, eighty, most, most ditches have never been cleaned, you know, we, the county owns them now. So when you put those culverts in and they're wonderful job getting used to their new excavator and all that fun stuff. And doing a great job of building them for the farmers, but if ever there was a time that there didn't need to be some right of way cleaning along that particular road, they have to lower those culverts.
Which culverts are they?
Well, the ones, there's two of them just to the west of one sixty-nine that have been recent.
There's one that's, that's new that, uh, is a one that blinded in a couple of it, you know, I mean, three inches or whatever, is that what you're talking about?
There's another one that, you know, it looks like they're just working on to get in this week, you know, get the excavator sitting there further to the west. It's just the fact that you know that there's a phenomenal amount of siltation in that right of way from, you know, then would have the original grading plan from back in the day when it was a state road, look, the grade and the depth and everything is. But not that it's creating a problem, you know, it does need a culvert, wonderful culvert, Smith and the one, you know.
We typically blind them in by digging all the way down to the clay line?
I disagree with that, because it just, you know, back in the day, there was some depth to them, they become shallower every year, just like any right of way does, so, but as a.
But also if you did, say the ditch is way silted in, and we don't plan on cleaning it in the near future, put a culvert in there, it's pretty much still just filled full of dirt.
Right, you can't dig it.
We still dig it to the clay line.
Do you?
Then we clean it up and continue to stretch with the culvert of the driveway usually.
Well, like I said, but to clarify, if, then I say, it's not that it's creating a problem, or is a problem at this point, but you know, just the fact that there is, it's gotta be phenomenal increase in the, over the eighty plus years, that's been a road, a hard surface road. But even when the agreement is if the county installs a driveway, if the request will.
We maintain it.
You maintain it, so if something would happen, there would be a, you know, it'd have to be a major clean out, you'd just lower the culvert.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we've done.
Yeah, and that's what we've announced too, but yeah.
Also, if we're, if we're cleaning dish and we come across the driveway that needs a pipe, that doesn't have a pipe, it's on the owner's pipe.
Right, yeah, but if there's an existing pipe or something changed in the grade depth or whatever.
We would reinstall and lower the pipe.
Yeah, you'd take care of it. Yeah, cause, yeah, I, I just, well, since I've lived there my entire life, I know that those right of ways along with all the others, they gradually get shallower. And it's, you know, it's a real gradual process, and it's not, it's not hurting anything, you know, it's still not affecting the roadway, it's not affecting the drainage, it goes through them, you know, under the culverts and stuff, everything's working just fine, maintained. We know that there's been siltation in there over many, many years.
Have the guys hop hole on each side of the driveway and see what we're talking about from material, if you're worried about it.
I'm a little bit worried about it, I'm just saying that if it ever would be cleaned, those culverts, I'm sure are way above.
Yeah, and I'm sure at that time, if they are, we'll just lower them, right?
That's, yeah, that's my point.
All right.
Is the mower working? I didn't wanna say that, but I, I haven't seen it, so I just, I heard nothing either, so, I just.
I'm, I'm with all three mowers have been good this year.
All right.
We, um, we have not had any problems.
Dude.
Our mower graders have not been as reliable this year.
Well, I know we just start, usually this time of year, we start pushing to get the stuff mowed, uh, when we get the.
We're on our last round of gravels.
For the shredded stuff.
We're on our last round of gravels, uh, I believe we're done with the blacktops, we might try and do them one last time if they start getting hairy before the weight supplies.
And I'd remind people that when I went south Saturday, there are farmers that are out.
Yeah, there's.
And corn.
Oh, yeah.
So watch yourself in gravel roads and tractors and.
Be earlier than normal.
It is, so.
I was coming back from Kansas City and their corn, I mean, it's ready to go, it, there's not a grain leap on most of it.
Really?
Visiting with one, said the stuff's so dry, the stock rotten up.
It is really.
So when the wind blows, it's gonna start toppling and that's the reason that they're up there. Just reminding people to keep their eyes out, tractors and machinery.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Really?
Say I'd make sure to put that little.
Yeah, and we got most out of rain yesterday.
I got rid of most of mine, moisture down.
That's what I'm saying, it was pretty hot. I, I turned my air conditioner down to seventy-one.
Uh-huh. Oh, well. Thanks, Ben.
Oh, I hope this year on the.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Thanks.
Yep.
Alrighty, I have Ben going down the list here, looks like we have just drainage lot.
Do you wanna do a committee report, and then she can.
All right.
Oh, all right, I had, uh, the only one I had was Wednesday, we had the mobile food pantry down Fairgrounds, which, um, kinda snuck up on everybody for the, uh, with Labor Day on Monday. Then I was thinking for some reason it was this week, but it was last week, we ended up with a hundred and sixteen families, two hundred and twenty-eight clients, we had fourteen vets and twenty-one volunteers. So we had a good group, I think they got rid of all but, you know, four, six, uh, boxes, so that went to the food pantry. Um, we're trying to, I talked with Janet Birdie the other day, um, we're trying to figure out a way, we had that lady up in Rennwick that used to come down from, from their food pantry up there.
Oh.
We don't, she's gone.
She's gone.
So, we're trying to figure out a way to make sure all of these small towns around here, if they are, if there's people that need food, we need to get them the food. So we're trying to figure out a way to get.
Especially somebody who isn't mobile.
Right, cause we took some food up to, um, Humboldt Homes, and I was visiting with some ladies there, we were, and the one lady looked at us, I said, why don't you come down, you don't have a car?
Yeah.
So then, we're trying to figure out a way to make that connection between, like Livermore, Bode, Rutland, wherever we have to go. So if we could get somehow coordinate on those days, that we knew that there was four families in, I'm just using Bode as an example, we could get the food up to them, drop it off at the library, make it work, so that we don't have. We had one time, we had forty, forty-some boxes that we were trying to get rid of.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we're working, we're trying to find that person that could come down from Bode or come down from Livermore, gather however many they can come up with a name, because we have to have a name for.
And that's basically, I had to have us a name, then there's no.
There's no, no farm, no anything, so that's what we're after.
Maybe they come up with one of the churches that, meaning.
Well, that's kinda what we're hoping, we're gonna do it through a church or do it through, um, Alyssa and I are just kinda brainstorming this on our own.
They could, uh, well, if you said Janet, who's the city clerk, you know, you talk to those, they all have their own city clerks.
Yeah.
They would maybe, no, they could maybe get the name locally.
Yeah.
At the town hall, and then they'd have the information to provide to the, like you said, the name and food, and then, like you said, Trish, you just need someone that would coordinate and come down and pick it up and.
We have all kinds of volunteers, and the food comes, the food comes in the afternoon, so it isn't like it, isn't, it's there like one thirty, two o'clock in the afternoon, so we can get the food up to them.
That day.
That, early in the afternoon, and we just gotta figure out how to get it to those small towns, to make sure that anyone that needs it, that's the reason, so.
Just, I think that the towns should kinda take it upon themselves to.
Yeah, organize it.
Know that the, you know, there's people from the small towns that can and do make it, but the ones that don't, the city hall of the town should have that list.
Right.
And get it to the food pantry.
So that's why I called Janet, cause I knew she had her finger on the pulse up in that area, and she said she would help us, and so that's what we're trying to do, and anybody that would, we have the same volunteers that come almost every other month to help down there, so, like I told them, next month, or next time we do it, there's gonna be probably snow flying in November. Well, I hope not too, but we never know, so I guess that's the.
Well, I think that's a great idea, though, to, to get that distributed, and that extra, you said the volunteers, to get it there, but it should kinda be a one point of contact, get it to the city hall, they can distribute it, or they know the people that need it.
Well, it's kind of a panic situation, and when I got there, there was, they had forty-five portions left, and they'd been there for almost forty-five minutes. Well, when you start calling and, and then.
They leave, yeah.
Yeah, so then we called up the Humboldt Homes and we got some names and we took a dozen up there, so that helped a lot, but by the same token, we just need to find those people that, and there's a lot of them that don't want, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't wanna know.
They have, yeah.
So anyway, that's what we're trying to coordinate and get some of that bugs worked out of it, so there, there we are, that's all I have.
I had no official acts last week.
What?
I know it, I know it, I have one week a month, one week a month that I don't have.
You have to do the six, you have to wait through.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, on the thirty-first, I had a VA meeting, food claims down here. Uh, on the eighth, had a animal shoulder meeting. They still need like cat litter and stuff like that. But, uh, that's going pretty good, it's got a lot of cats, anybody that wants cats, go see them. Lot of fish around the county, but I had third grader safety day camp on Tuesday and Wednesday last week.
But that was interesting.
Yeah.
It was interesting, I found out them third graders this year, their extension band up here is about that long, because you can tell them four times.
Ah.
Right away they start in. Uh, that's all I have.
You forgot when you were a third grader.
Most of them's pretty good, the last two classes, I was just about ready to send one little girl outside. I says, I know who the class plowing in.
Did you say you knew, I don't look real well?
That it, you said Dave?
That's it.
Okay, well, okay, on the past Tuesday, the seventh, um, we had, uh, we call LAC, but actually it's Public Safety Commission meeting that morning, we had it here at the supervisor's room. And that's the official meeting I had last week.
Yeah, I had the LAC meeting on the seventh, and then the evening I went to the dog shelter on the eighth, Dave, and she does a, we got a good director out there, she's really doing a great job.
Good.
It's, it's, I mean, she told us some stories of some things she's had to deal with, and you don't think that stuff happens at Humboldt, but it does.
Twenty-eight cats in one house.
Yeah, thirty-some cats in one house.
Deputies went in there and there was fleas all over. Had to suit up.
I'm just amazed at how much the coordination that she's, the people, when I'm up at my building, there's so many people that come and walk and do chores or.
Lot of volunteers, lots of volunteers.
It's unbelievable.
She has a great network of people that are really on it.
Yeah, it is.
Good.
And, uh, yeah, we getting, we getting a portable storage building brought in, and that was donated by someone.
That and donations for, uh, cans and bottles.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot, I mean.
That's one good.
What was it, two hundred and some dollars was the redemptions they had?
Yeah, just last month.
Yeah, fifty-six hundred and some cans or something.
Yeah, right, right, right on the.
Thing right there, you can donate your bottles and cans there.
They have glass bottles?
Yes, they have two.
Oh, do they, good, I got one I wanna get rid of.
One of them is, says for glass, the other one's for the cans, so.
Pepsi bottles.
Pepsi bottles.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
They are looking at a fundraiser to raise money to put a fence up all the way around the back, so they can have a.
Oh, their exercise area for them to run. And that stuff has doubled in price, just like everything else from a year ago, over two years ago.
Sure.
So, but, uh, she does a great job up there, and that's all I had.
Uh, I forgot that I had a meeting with the person from over to Pocahontas County.
Yeah.
On the side of the county shore.
Yeah.
Uh, didn't we or did we not approve that twenty-eighty and sign it? Okay.
I, I thought we had, but they.
I don't think we signed it.
I don't think we signed, we did, we totally approved it, but we got spots here for, I'm gonna pass around to get signatures.
Okay.
Not with on the twelfth of April.
Twelfth of April.
Well, well, we'll all get it signed and get it over to them.
Yeah.
Perfect. Do we have any news from anything from like downstairs, or you're moving your? Yeah, okay.
Uh, got election tomorrow.
Our special elections for Leverne and Rutland, hopefully somebody will show up.
Yes, they have to remember that they're.
It's still funny, if they don't take it, it goes back to the rest of us and we spread it around.
The community communities that did vote, yes.
That was, cause no one voted in the last one. No one showed up to vote. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Trish, did you also find any news out about, uh, was it Gilmore, you were looking for the church? For voting over there?
Um, I haven't found, I haven't asked on that.
Okay.
But I do.
Well, they were closing some of those churches in these small towns, and like, just using Pioneer as an example, they used to do it at the elevator, cause that was the only building, she was having an issue over in Gilmore, cause they were closing that church. All of a sudden, we don't have a voting place, so. We don't think of all these things until.
All of a sudden.
All of a sudden November shows up and, or you gotta vote, special election, and we don't have a place to vote.
What church are they closing down in your city?
Wasn't it the Methodist?
Was it the Methodist, they're, they're.
They opposed the Methodist on Rutland.
On Rutland? Alright.
It's closed and sold.
Okay. Oh, it is sold already?
Yeah, they have an auction.
Last Wednesday, I was over there and spent a half in the car.
Wow.
Cost me a dollar, a hundred and two dollars.
City Hall, Gilmore's in Polkys, so you can't have it there.
Right.
Did you buy something at that auction?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, uh...
Church pew?
Uh, it's a...
I bought five calls and cards.
Baptist and all.
You're gonna get online and become an ordained minister now?
Nope.
You sure?
Nope. The stuff come off and the boat come out and the flower went in the middle of it.
Okay.
It's a pretty octagon wood, uh, oak wood.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So...
Alright.
I'm making a motion if we're gonna go into drainage then?
Yep. First, uh, second barack, all in favor?
Alright.
We're gonna move into drainage.
Hey, Alyssa, I just thought, maybe you could put something on the radio to entice people to vote tomorrow, those two, since it's tomorrow, right?
Yep, and that's the...
And so the paper won't have time to, but if you could just sort of do it...
Mainly for the attention of Laverne residents and Rutland residents.
Sure. Well, we can talk after.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Trish would know, I don't know where it's at, but where the...
Laverne and Rutland.
Right, Laverne and Rutland, but where at in Laverne and Rutland?
Uh, I would guess, where do they get these set up? At the elevator in Laverne? Oh, the community center.
In both places?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Laverne, I think it's just for Humboldt County because they've already voted it out.
Yep. But you got the elevator and Hattie House and...
She knows more, yeah. She's, she's the voting...
She'll find out where, where the voting takes place for us. We found out when Rutland missed it by what, one vote the last time?
Yep.
So is this the, this is that same drainage they were having issues with?
Yeah, they've had issues for years. It's just vaguely, slightly low as you can see.
The works actually, actually guys can do that.
That's, that's a voting at a different county, but that's probably...
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The maps that I gave you have, yeah. I had Donnie Wagner stop in the office the other day and stated that there's a few new areas that need to be addressed. Uh, one of them is just along the north side of that road track in the short area between the tracks and the open ditch. And just below that, um, there's two red triangular shapes just above the E and the Delano. Those are two shaded areas that are actually right outside the district, but he wants to do some private tiling. And he'd like to tie into our vein, but unfortunately he said he doesn't think it's in good enough shape. And he said that, he had asked me to do some research on it. So going back to two thousand and fifteen, there was...
Oh, we have one here.
There's an actual note in the file from Jacobson Westroverage stating that they were looking at doing a major district improvement. But it turns out all that they ended up doing was putting in a couple hundred feet of tile and a new connection where that lateral G on the south connects with that. And then back in two thousand and sixteen, McPeak fixed an intake, did some water jetting. And then there ended up being another large sinkhole on the north side of the tracks. And that was, um, Donnie Wagner had reported that one as well. And in two thousand and seventeen, there was another sinkhole on the south side of the tracks reported by Mort Christiansen. And further south of that was a blowout in the field. And then just, just on the east side of the elevator on the north side of the tracks, Doug Murso had replaced two sinkholes and turned around and had two blowouts next to those. And then in two thousand and nineteen, there was another blowout just to the east of where that lateral one T is in. So there was a new eighteen inch intake connection put there. And then in two thousand and twenty, another blowout north of the tracks, just on the south edge of that lagoon. So...
Is that what that dark area is, is the lagoon?
Yeah, the dark shaded area that the, the little green line, the green line is actually our tile, but you don't know how close the maps are because we found that some of our tile is actually a little east or west of that. But yeah, this shows that it runs right under the corner of that lagoon. But it could be...
Which it probably doesn't.
Right. It's probably maybe right under the corner of it, but it's, it's pretty close. And Donnie, I got the map out and he kind of helped pinpoint where some of these locations were. But he's just wondering if, if anybody has done any further review or had any thoughts about doing any more improvement.
Well, I have pretty intimate knowledge of this. I've been out there. Kim explained, you can see there's been a lot of fast repairs. Not unlike a lot of other old tile systems. You can see the district is obviously encompasses part of Bode. Uh, goes a little bit to the south, uh... And, you know, it's just in, in a rough shape, particularly that area on the north and south side of the track as it tries to get itself to the ditch. The funny thing of it is, there's really never been a formal petition to place a tile.
Yeah, they just add for little fixes here and there.
Which is a lot. And I, this is my opinion from what I've understood. And certainly anyone, landowner in the district could petition a new system. Um, it appears why they aren't doing that is they don't think that it would make it. Because you know how drainage works. You get X percentage to move forward with a new project or a new, a new system in this case. And, you know, otherwise, as far as trustees, we're gonna keep fixing the old one, doing what we can. And I've talked with Donnie multiple times. I've been out there. I've seen personally a couple of these fixes. It's just tile blowouts, tile.
Is it, is it super shallow?
Not really.
Oh, it's not?
Not on the south side. Now, the north side, going as it gets closer to the ditch, there could be some spots there where it might be a little shit more shallow. But where I've seen personally the repairs, it's not on the counter that being shallow.
Okay.
Probably on the counter of the ditch. And of course, you get in that, you're familiar with, uh, sometimes the ground makeup isn't the flashiest. And it, you know, but a lot of it is just age. And that's where a lot of these systems are just playing something age. So, uh, I would speak to, Mike said he wants to private tile, but unless, I'm pretty sure this district map is pretty close, you can't tile into a district you're not in.
No.
I think years ago, we talked about this. And the biggest share of the cost was gonna be to the city of Bode and they suggested putting a bigger pipe in there. They've had trouble with this for years and years and years. And, uh, Bode didn't have the money to do anything. So they just spot fatched here and there.
That's what's been going on.
And it's, when you say the city of Bode, you're talking the city, not the residents. Because the residents are, they're gonna pay a big chunk of it.
Yep.
And the city's gonna pay a big chunk.
They're gonna pay a lot of it. I'm just wondering, that railroad goes through there every day. I'm just wondering if the vibration, sitting that close to the railroad, that vibration don't flex that pipe and break it?
Well, knock on wood, as we speak, the, uh, tile or, you know, the, the, going underneath the right, a railroad driveway is working. We all know about what happens when that...
Yeah, I've noticed the car crosses it twice.
Yeah, we can only, we can only be so lucky.
Oh, yeah, I got a dumb question.
Yeah.
Um, if a person did a, uh, an improvement and went from the outlet up to the tracks and then paralleled the tracks up to where the, the lagoon is and tied on there. So you separated that south part, you know, had a bigger tile put in so it lightened the load. Because I mean, you have blowouts because they're over capacity.
I'm not entirely sure it's over capacity.
Or you think the tile are just breaking?
They're breaking. That's what it is. Because you see that it goes to the south, but not very far. And it probably does. I mean, there, you see no district tile in the south, uh, of, you know, where that loops around there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but obviously that's in the district because you have ability to control it.
Yeah, so all, all that water within that yellow line goes there.
Yeah, yeah. So it, yeah, that's the district, obviously. Um... But how does this work?
Trying to get rid of crossing the tracks eventually.
Going as the existing line does. So you would think maybe potentially put a new... Obviously, a lot of the breakages have been on that north side of track.
Yep. Put a new line from the ditch
To the north, to the track.
Up through the tracks and then tee off on the north side of tracks and go straight west, parallel tracks, to tie in on the north side of tracks.
That existing...
So the other one doesn't go underneath. That way you got a bigger outlet for both lines.
So run something between the tracks and the lagoon. And run parallel.
And then of course you'd have to keep, you could all, that would, well...
That'd give you a bigger outlet for both.
Be a bigger outlet on the north side.
And the north side.
How far is that lagoon from the track?
It would cost a whole lot because you're...
That'd be nice to know.
You know, not that many feet away it was.
But you still have to maintain that existing tile on the south side. You're saying you relieve
Relieve the pressure.
A lot of it.
Or what about, yeah, because all that city water wouldn't go through that south side, you know, cut, cut...
Yeah, keep that on the north. Re-do the north side, hook everything up, maintain it on the south side.
Yeah, because that's kind of looks where our brakes are, is right there a lot.
Can you...
That would, it wouldn't hurt.
It would definitely, it would be terribly expensive either, I don't know.
Definitely improve...
Because you're not going underneath the tracks.
You're still gonna ma, have to have those, uh, underneath the tracks.
Well, they want, they want, the one on the west.
You won't be able to eliminate.
You could eliminate the one on the west by the lagoon. Just, that'll follow the tracks then.
Hey, what's the distance between the lagoon and the tracks?
Yeah, it's a distance here. So...
Uh, not very far.
Tiling between them.
Yeah, is room to go in between there.
Couple hundred feet.
Yeah, I think it, it would have to be out of their right of way. They would never built a lagoon in the right of way. So it should be able to sneak through there. But it's not, it's not miles. I mean, it's not, you know, half a mile. It's not a quarter of a mile.
But it's probably about two blocks, yeah, a block.
Relatively close.
Probably about a block.
Relatively close. But it should, I mean, they would've been able to build it in the right of way. So there should be room to go through.
I, I would think that would make the system last a lot longer. And then if you ever did have a, more failures, you could add, go from that point on.
Be a start.
Be a start.
Yeah. Yeah, you're...
Well, can we talk with someone and at least ask them what their thoughts are on that?
Yeah, I think, well, we got a petition to do something.
Do we have a petition?
Don't we?
No, this is strange, isn't it, though?
No.
Now, the...
Been pretty much informational and it seems like that...
February petition to review whether repairs needed.
Yeah.
So here we are reviewing it again.
Yeah, the second meeting was actually an informal meeting, but that was done in two thousand and nineteen. But there have been act, no major improvements done since that meeting. But...
Because at that point, we really didn't have any, wanted to step forward and...
Right. And that is something that Donnie didn't actually sign a petition when he was here the other day. But he just wanted the board to review. If that is an option that we need to address, then he would sign one. He actually has the land, um, in the trapezoid shape, like between the zero and the three.
Okay.
On DD one oh three?
Yeah, where it says DD one oh three. Between the zero and the three, there's another red triangular shape. That's another low area that, that's, that is Wagner property. And then just north of there, he said there was a sinkhole right at that fence line.
Must be where that X area is.
Yeah, the other...
Oh, you say north there a lot of tracks somewhere in there?
Right. And, but the Xs, the Xs are actually where tile has been improved. And then there's been two blowouts where the red, the red circles are.
Well, the question is, can, as trustees, can we authorize, uh, repairs we can all day long? Can we authorize this as a repair?
Or improvement.
Because where do, where do you draw the line between what needs to be petitioned and what do we have jurisdiction to just say, let's, uh... You know, your idea is pretty sound because of relieving, you know, getting a separate line. Sure gonna have to maintain the existing for the most part. But it would maybe alleviate its ongoing failure.
You know, if it lasts ten, fifteen, twenty years, then you can add on to it if you needed to.
But can, as you see, like I said before, you don't see a petition in front of us. We didn't see one back years ago. I, I...
I, I think we do have the authority as trustees to do it, but I would prefer to see a petition from landowners.
Because, you know, there's that fine line of repair versus improvements are typically at the request of the district. And that has a petition and that has to go through that whole percentage regular rule of the district approving it. And I'm just gonna be candid. I think while we haven't seen a petition...
I mean, if we do, if say we think this needs to be done, we still, if it's an improvement, we still have to have a hearing, go through all those steps.
The petition has to make its way for us to act on.
I do think so. But I could be wrong.
I think we wanna double check on it.
Yeah.
Instead, you know, this, and I, I just honestly think that's why we haven't seen a petition. Because I think they have a suspicion it won't pass.
The percentage...
And we can't, and the percentage won't be high enough for us to move forward and say, "Okay, we're gonna do this improvement." Because an improvement, I think, needs to be by petition.
And that may be a step that's coming. When Donnie come in, he said the area west of the lagoon where there's two red Xs, those are the two areas that Doug Murso had done. East of the elevator and west of the lagoon. Both that, that area there is owned by, um, the Wilson Brothers Partnership, John and Rich. And they're the ones that are saying that tile line there is in dire need of some work. I don't know that there is a new sinkhole that has formed in that, but Donnie...
You know, it'd be nice to get the landowners in here so we can talk.
And I can contact them.
Well, there again, I is, I'm not an expert on drainage law and protocol, but it appears when you talk improvement, that requires a petition. And that involves the landowners. And that, then, then you get there, they get notified, they are the ones that, with the acres and the percentages and all that, are the ones that make the decision, do they want an improvement in their district.
Well, and there's been enough improvement. Four, there's a four hundred feet just to the west of the T where that lateral G runs south.
On the south of the tracks.
Okay. The red circle at the T is the new connection. Four hundred feet west of there is what Mansky replaced.
I was gonna say that.
So that, that would relieve that southern line. And then right where that curves and goes north through the tracks, that whole corner has been replaced. So that, a good majority of that has been done, but it's that north fraction that needs attention. And he said from the railroad tracks to the open ditch. That line there, he said there, right along the east edge of that open ditch is a, it's kind of a, yeah. And he, and he said that there's sinkholes through there.
Comes into play, right?
Yeah.
Now, if you're talking a lesser extent, uh, uh, more of a repair than an improvement, we could say, "Let's get somebody in there and let's get a new line from the open ditch to where it goes under the tracks." And that would take care of a lot of the problems.
The only problem is you can't make it any bigger.
Right.
So what is the size? So what is the size, do you know?
I don't know what the size is, but I'm sure it's not big enough.
Well...
I'm not sure, it's always because of the age, you know, and tiling practices these days.
That is something we definitely could, you know... And that's what's happened over the years, is where they pay in how many hundred feet or something.
In nineteen, they put the tee on eighteen inch.
Yeah, this shows eighteen. And actually, it was really fifteen.
I'm not an architect, but I think that's... I really think that's gonna require a condition.
Which is right here.
Off great.
This section right here was replaced with eighteen inch.
I think...
Look at your second page there and tell your tile size.
I think trustees...
Oh, here, fifteen inch.
It tells the tile size.
It must be a not landowners, we are technically the U.S. rules.
Oh, you said we could say...
We could file a petition as a trustee's to have it done, and then go through the process.
And that's still up to the landowners?
That's still up to the landowners for remonstrance and all that.
That's what I'm gonna ask. We don't wanna, you know, overstep our knowledge.
No. Sometimes there's no one in the bunch that wants to take the heat from the nation.
A lot better.
Oh, okay.
And I guess we could operate out of this premise.
Okay. So this... This shows a twelve inch, but when it...
Well, it says ten inch main above lot.
Mm-hmm.
Then it comes down to a, is it sixteen?
Sixteen.
And then it goes eighteen to twelve.
Oh, it stays at eighteen, goes to a twenty.
I think what we should do is have an informal meeting with the landowners, invite them in, invite the city of Bode to come in. Couple of landowners, and get their opinion, what they think needs to be done. Is it... Is it an adequate system that just needs repair, or is it something that isn't adequate?
Right.
Where that twelve, there's that two there, Bruce, that goes back to a twelve.
'Cause I know we've been spending money on this thing for quite a few years.
Yeah.
You got a sixteen or eighteen coming here, and goes into a twenty up here.
And then from the track...
Then twelve.
I think it's half, eight, turn eighty of the... Why is it twenty?
This puts out this one.
It's not a lot. Yeah, like me, I can still shingle, but I'm just not very good at more than just... It's just not too damn old.
Notice the size of this. This is like some of our huge districts.
Sixteen coming through here.
That's why I said we expect people in, that's why they're all...
And then to the boat?
Mm-hmm.
Back to the thing to do something.
The yellow dotted line is where the ground is.
But I'm just saying, there's nothing...
She makes up this line.
No, there's no additional tracks or anything in the city.
Here, you're picking up the drain.
To come through this main, here, cross the track, or cross the track, which is higher than they're doing.
As you're going downstream...
There's a...
You're picking up some of this.
When Donnie said that the years that they've been addressing the repairs, it's the people in the town of Bode don't understand drainage district. Now, the farmers understand, they're getting benefit from it, but the ones in the city that are gonna be charged for this don't understand.
As long as your basement doesn't fill up with water every year, they don't... It doesn't add up.
Yeah, they don't understand where is that going.
But if your basement fills with water every year, then you'd have a different opinion.
So would we try to invite these before you fall, or are you waiting?
I think we better get started. 'Cause everything takes forever.
Yeah.
It won't get done this year if you do it, there's no way. There's enough time.
I think something that could be done this year as a repair would be on the north side of the tracks, where it has had multiple failures, just a replacement of the old tile.
Yeah.
If you happen to be over in that area, and I'm not putting any pressure on you, but if you just walked it or...
Oh, I've been, I've been out there.
I'm just saying, get the distance as to what... You did something on the north side, what... How much area we could...
That's a relatively small project. Everything costs, you know, in this day and age, more than it used to, but that's a pretty doable project. And that would, I mean, that would take away a lot of the mandates.
I was just looking at it, we did a lot for up here at the Hunter March property. That was an eighteen, if I remember right. Was that an eighteen inch tool they put in up here on the Hunter March property about a year last spring?
That they did for the prostitute, district project that ended up being?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, and that was, what was that, fifty-six thousand?
That was a lot, a lot. Probably further, yeah, further than this, but... I mean, I could do a little checking too. I know the parties involved, the landowners involved. The discussion's cracked, yeah, but people in the small towns don't have a grasp of drainage, 'cause they're not farmers, so... But they get their assessments just like the landowners.
But I mean, yeah, that... I think we should just have an informal meeting and get their feelings.
We...
But here's a question.
Kind of direction.
If you send out an invitation, just an informal meeting, so everybody can get their thoughts back, but who's all that gets sent to? You have everybody out in the district?
Right. I would... I would have... I could either do a... A notice where I send to all landowners, or we could put a big notice in the paper too, which would just...
The other option is, maybe we should have an engineer, spend a few bucks and find out what it takes to see if it is adequate.
Didn't we have?
There's no such thing as a few bucks with it.
Didn't we have?
I don't know, it'll be my thousand, thousand dollars.
Jacobson's do something up there?
Yeah, twenty fifteen, wasn't it?
I think that's fair to the district till we get the process.
That was back, yeah. Two thousand and fifteen was when Jacobson Westergaard was noted. That... There was a... An email that was sent to Mansky on just doing, um, an estimate for tile improvement, but there wasn't a... The only thing that Mansky ended up completing was just this area right here.
You don't have an engineer report is what you're telling us.
No.
So we haven't had an engineer look at it to decide that it's big enough.
Informal, get the parties that are... Would be in the district involved would be a better thing.
I think so too. There's God's and fifty-five cents a landowner, or whatever it is, for mailings.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that's the better option, 'cause we don't wanna be spending the extra money on a report that maybe isn't necessary. It may come down to something that's pretty cost-effective and just, uh, you know, just throw out an arbitrary number of a thousand, twelve hundred for a tile replacement. Does a lot of good. And that we can obviously design. Do you think you could...
Well, this year, you don't have the water flowing like we've had in the past, or...
No, this year is really adequate.
Well, we could. I'm just saying, where in two years, we might be the opposite, wet, wet. And it'll... Then you'll wish we'd went further, but...
Well, Kim, if you think you could get something out and...
Absolutely.
I think, yeah, keep it informal, just so that everyone is notified.
Just do it so when he's gonna be here.
Actually, let's do it after December third. But I think that's fair.
And then, we've looked, you know, we've discussed it, we've decided, I think it's...
But then you get a feeling what the landowners want.
It's still a district, you know, where is it at? And that might give us a better direction. 'Cause as far as getting anything done this calendar year, even a... Not a real big project, we're pushing our limits, 'cause...
Well, most of our contractors are still finishing up after all the FEMA ditch cleanouts. Now they have to go back in for all the tile over there, so everybody's pretty busy up until the summer.
Some of the other ones do field tiling, and that's gonna start very quickly.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be a little short-handed to get anything done.
But it'd be good to get something lined up for next year.
Yes. Send something out informal, I think is fine at this point. If we're not...
Well, and I could... I could also suggest in the letters that I send them, that they're welcome to submit their opinions in writing and just send it to the courthouse.
Yeah, that'd be fine too.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That'd be a good idea, 'cause a lot of people working ain't gonna take... Can't take that time.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay.
And one other thing, though, as we talk, I mean, this is district protocol. If someone files a petition for an improvement, that has to go through the process.
Yeah.
And that's up to the landowners in the district.
Okay.
Any other drainage concerns out there?
When... Is there a meeting coming up for the dam?
October ninth.
October, that's what I wondered.